Come on. All right, let's get this thing going.
All right, I'm gonna call the Murfreesboro City Council Special Meeting. We're here at the Murfreesboro Police Headquarters. It is November the 12th, 2020. If you will, bow with me and let's pray, and then we'll stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, I thank you for this day, this chance that we get together, for the sunshine that not only brings life, but it brings so much to our community that we're able to enjoy. Lord, I thank you for those that are hurting today. Specifically, pray for the Dotson family that lost their mother and their wife yesterday, and said this. I'm thankful for our community, that we have a community that will stop and pay respects. The place that we live in is special, and that's because of you. Help us make decisions that will be worthy of this community, will be worthy of you, and, Lord, we thank you for loving us. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no redeeming and justice for all. All right, we're going to make a quick adjustment. We're gonna move up the impact fee analysis to our first item, so we can, I think, what's our con-
Carson.
Yeah. Why don't you go ahead, Craig, and kick us off?
All right. Council, some time ago, requested that staff look at impact fees and how that would assist us in our budgeting as we grow. And so, to do that, and you've had the report, so you may have read it in there, but to do that, we have to go through some steps that are necessary, and as part of that, we need some expertise, and we have with us Carson, is it Vice or-
Vice.
Carson Vice. I know the full name, it's been divided up. To help us through this study, he's put a lot of time into it, it was several months. We got a little bit delayed with the COVID situation, but back on track now. Welcome, Carson. Let you go through your presentation and answer any questions for council.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just say, before you start, this is kinda, there's no decision today. This is initiation, this is initiate the discussion and kinda get some understanding of what it is in there and ask some questions. We can always cycle back with Carson and get other answers that we need, and then we'll schedule later discussions before we get to a point of decision sometime in the near future. Go ahead, sorry.
Mayor, members of council, I'm Carson Vice, and before I start, I'd just like to say, I'm from Chattanooga originally, and it's nice to be back in Tennessee and particularly come to a council work session where you guys say your prayer beforehand and then the pledge, because, believe it or not, there's a lot of jurisdictions we work for around the country that they don't do that. So, I appreciate that. So, our firm is based in Bethesda, Maryland, and Boise, Idaho, and we specialize in impact fees, fiscal and economic impact analysis, and we've done more of that kinda work than any firm in the country. And we've also done some impact fee work in Tennessee. We were the ones behind the school impact fee in Williamson County that was challenged for its legality in terms of being able to implement it, not the methodology itself that Williamson won on appeal. We've also done work in Portland and Hendersonville, some economic work in Chattanooga and Collierville and Shelby County and Knox County. So, we've got quite a bit of Tennessee experience. What I thought I'd do is sort of introduce the topic of impact fees, you know, go over the basics, some myths and misconceptions that we find around the country, and then get into the study at a high level. And then, obviously, if you guys wanna get into the details of the report, we can certainly do that after the presentation. First of all, an impact fee is a one-time payment, okay? It's not an ongoing payment. It's assessed against new development, and it's intended to offset their fair share of capital facility needs, whether it's parks, or water and sewer, police, schools, et cetera. We can't co-mingle the money, we can't put it in the general fund and use it for operations. We have to account for it separately in interest-bearing accounts and publish an annual report. And I think it's important to note that it is not a tax. And the reason I'm bringing this up is I can't tell you how many communities around the country where we hear the home builders come into the meeting and say, you know, this is a tax on new development. Well, a tax is very different than a fee. A tax is basically a revenue-raising mechanism. A fee, you generally have to design it to cover the cost of the service. For instance, you know, when you design the fee for building permits, it's basically designed to cover the cost of providing that service. With impact fees, it goes a step further. We have to meet a legal standard that requires basically three prongs to be met. One is we have to show nexus or need, so we have to sort of tell a story through the impact fee report that growth has occurred in Murfreesboro. This is where you are now in terms of population, housing units, employment, et cetera. That growth is gonna continue, which is why we have to make development projections within the report, and that growth is gonna generate the need for additional infrastructure if we wanna maintain levels of service. So, that's the first prong of the test. The second thing we need to demonstrate is what we call benefit, and we show benefit in two ways. One is through the timing of the expenditure, and some state impact fee acts prescribe the amount of time you have to spend the money. You also show benefit geographically. So, particularly when we work for large cities or large counties, we may have to divide the city or county into service areas in order to show benefit. The idea being that, you know, we don't wanna collect a fee here in the West that we use to build capacity in the East for which that fee payer receives no benefit for. And so, that's part of our job through the methodology. The third thing we need to prove or show is proportionality, and that's why you will see the fees within the report allocated to different land uses. We just can't have a residential fee versus a non-residential fee, because, as we all know, in most communities, a single-family dwelling has more people than an apartment. And from a transportation perspective, you know, retail and restaurant and commercial uses generate higher trips per day than office and industrial. And so, we have to make the fee proportionate to their impact on the particular infrastructure system that we're evaluating. There are three different methods that we can use to calculate fees, and the way to think of those are the past, the present, and the future. And when we look to the past, it's generally done when you've oversized infrastructure, whether it's through foresight or accident, it doesn't matter. You've got excess capacity. A good example of that is if we were doing wastewater or water, and let's just say your treatment plant had, you know, 10 MGD of capacity, and you're currently operating at 6 million gallons a day. Well, new development would, we would design the fee to basically recoup from new development the cost of providing that excess for MGD of capacity. We can also do it, you know, with other categories, so like police, we frequently do public safety-related fees where, let's say, the city three years ago built a new public safety building, oversized it to serve new growth over the next 20 years, and so we can design the fee to recoup the growth share of that cost. When we look to the present, this is by far the most frequent, frequently-used method. We call it a consumption base or an incremental expansion, and it's really a snapshot of where you are today as a community. We use this for the parks fee, where we document, you know, this is the number of active park acres you have, for example. Here's the level of service, you know, per person or per thousand people. This is what it costs us to buy an acre of land today. This is what it costs us to construct the amenities that are on the parks. And so, the idea here is that we're gonna incrementally expand the infrastructure system in response to growth. The third way we can do the fee is we look to the future. We call that a plan-based approach. We typically see this with utilities and roads, sometimes parks, if there's a funding plan associated with it. There's some upsides and downsides to this approach. One is, from an upside perspective, you may get a higher fee if that's your desire. The downside is, is if we say we're gonna build parks A, B, and C in these years, and here's the funding arrangement, and let's just say growth slows, there's a recession, you still have to build that plan. It's just that the impact fee revenue is less, and so the general fund or other funding sources are exposed, and you have to make up the difference. Whereas with that consumption-based approach, the fee may be slightly less, but you have flexibility. There is no general fund exposure. If growth is slow, you just need to build to the extent to which they paid the fees. If it's faster, you're gonna get more money. If it's slower, you get less money, but you don't have a plan, per se, that you've committed yourself to. You're just basically maintaining current levels of service. So, when we look at eligible costs, obviously, growth-related infrastructure is available, or, excuse me, eligible maintenance and repairs, no. Excess capacity, yes. A common situation that jurisdictions find themselves in legally is when they try to adopt fees that are trying to correct an existing deficiency. You've heard me use this term "existing levels of service," and what I mean by that, it's where you are today relative to your infrastructure compared to the demand units, whether it's population, vehicle trips, jobs, et cetera. A lot of times jurisdictions will say, well, our adopted level of service in our parks and master plan is, let's say, seven acres per thousand, so we're gonna base the fee on that level of service. Well, if you're only providing 4.5 acres per thousand, you can't correct that existing deficiency through the impact fee unless you've identified a funding source. So, a lot of communities will go out and get a local option sales tax that's dedicated to parks, and if they do that, they can backfill that existing deficiency with that revenue source and then charge the impact fees at the higher level of service. So, it's important that we do our due diligence on our end to make sure we don't get you in that sort of situation. We also have to evaluate the need for credits, and there's a lot of confusion about credits in terms of how they work and when you need them. But the idea here is that if we charge new development for an impact fee for parks, but we have another funding stream that we may use to construct the exact same improvements, whether it's property tax or sales tax or some other source like gas tax for roads, we need to make sure that new development doesn't pay twice, once through the impact fee, and then again with that future revenue source. So, a lot of times you'll see in the impact fee methodology, depending on the funding arrangements in the community, that we have to give this credit for either existing debt service or dedicated funding sources. We also have to make sure, from an implementation perspective, that we give credits for when a developer comes in and as part of their project either donates land or builds improvements for which the impact fee is being collected. And so, you would work out those arrangements within a development agreement in terms of some sort of payback, so that they're made whole and so they're not being charged twice. Before we get into the details, I wanted to cover some misconceptions that we see around the country. One is that there's sometimes a feeling that if we just implement impact fees, it's gonna be the silver bullet that solves all of our CIP needs, and that's simply not the case, because rarely does the impact fee cover 100% of the cost of new development, because you have to give the credits within the methodologies. And then also, you have to think about operating costs, because, you know, if we're honest, we realize that our capital budget is usually only 15% to 25% of our total budget, and so it's really the operating costs that you have to worry about. And frankly, post-recession in 2012, we had a lot of clients sort of dial back their park impact fees and focus on developing parks they had versus buying additional land because of the operating cost. We've addressed the existing deficiencies thing, so we can't just base impact fees on planning standards. Another area that jurisdictions get themselves in trouble is, you know, either waiving or reducing non-residential fees, and the idea here is that, you know, we have the Equal Protection Clause within the Constitution, and so we have to treat all development equally through the impact fee system. So, we can't just adopt, for instance, 100% of the recommended amount for residential, but only 50% for non-residential, because that's discrimination. If we do waive fees, we have to make sure that we make up the difference through a transfer from other revenues in order to make the plan whole. Another misconception we have is that all developers or builders hate impact fees. I would tell you that the smart ones like impact fees, because it guarantees that they're gonna have a place to do business, you know, because if the jurisdiction is struggling to provide growth-related infrastructure, that certainly hurts their product. And so, we work with a lot of developers around the country who are pro-impact fee. And finally, there's a concern, and rightly so, that impact fees, you know, negatively affect the low-to-moderate-income housing market, because the idea is that, you know, in a good economy, this is certainly true, that the fee does get passed on to the user through the cost of the house. And depending on the economic situation we find ourselves in at the time, depends on how much of that fee is actually transferred to the homebuyer, for example. If we find ourselves in a robust economy, usually it's the full fee plus a markup, because the developer has carrying costs. When we're in a down economy, everybody sort of foots the bill. You know, the farmer who's selling the land to the developer takes less for his land, the developer takes less profit, and a portion of it is funded by the home purchaser. But we can, there are ways that we can get around the impact on affordable housing. One is, we can give credits or waive the fees, and if we establish a criteria for doing so, again, the caveat is we have to find the money from somewhere to make up the difference. And we have a lot of clients that do that. They may set aside, you know, half a million a year to go to an affordable housing impact fee program. And also, there's ways to do it through the methodology. We've done a lot of fees around the country where they're based on the size of the house. And so, in most communities, we can get a relationship between the square footage of the house, the number of people that live there, the number of vehicles available, which influences trip generation rates. And so, the larger the house, they pay a larger fee, and then there's a leveling off point with the demographics. And so, the smaller, more affordable units pay less of a fee, and so that's one way to mitigate those impacts and promote housing equity, et cetera. Now, getting into the meat of the study, I mentioned that what we have to do as part of this study is make growth projections. From a residential perspective, we're projecting an increase of slightly over 48,000 new persons over the next 10 years, and that equates to about 14,811 single-family units and an additional 4,900 multifamily units. From a non-residential perspective, we are looking at an increase of about 6,649 jobs and an increase of almost 4 million square feet of non-residential floor area. Let's talk about the parks and recreation fee. We have basically four components as part of this fee. One is the cost of new park land, the park improvements or amenities. We're talking about tennis courts, multipurpose fields, et cetera, community centers, and then the cost of the actual impact fee study, which allows you to recoup the cost, our consulting costs, over the next five years. We did use a consumption-based approach, which is sort of a snapshot of where you are today in terms of level of service, and the costs are allocated 100% to residential development.
Is that consumption-based approach, that middle one?
Yeah, exactly. The present, yeah, yeah. So, this, what we try to do in the report when we use this consumption-based approach is turn those levels of service standards into a quantifiable amount of infrastructure. So, I'm gonna have to get my glasses on so I could read this. So, the top part of this table is all the different level of service standards for the different components. So, you can see here that the level of service standard is .009 acres per person for parkland. The amenities is .001, and then the recreation or community centers is about 1.6 square feet per person. And then to the right of the table, you see what the cost is. The cost assumption for an acre of land is slightly over 58K. The average amenity cost about $371,000 to construct, and then the cost to replicate community center square footage is estimated at about $330 a square foot. So, then what we do is we apply those levels of service standards you see on the left side of the table to the population projection within the report, and you can see here that if those growth projections hold true, that at the bottom of the table, the city would need to build or purchase 439 additional acres of land, and that land would have a cost of about $25.6 million, okay? Now, you could choose, as a community, to purchase 40 million in land. It's just that growth would only pay for 25 million of that, because that's your level of service. Anything above that would be a conscious decision by the city to increase their levels of service. Same with amenities, generate a need of about 17.4 million and about 26 million in additional community center space. So, total expenditures over the 10 years that are growth-related would total almost $69 million. So then, when we look at the draft impact fee, you can see at the top of the table, there's the different cost-per-person components, or cost-per-person for the various components. So, we get a gross cost per person of about $1,442. And then when we look or compare that to the number of persons per housing unit, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, the proposed fee is about $3,881 for a single-family unit and about $2,857 for a multifamily unit. So then, what we've done here is we've taken those same growth projections and said, okay, well, if you adopted these fees at 100% of the maximum amount, you would get, the revenue is, because we're using this consumption-based approach, approximates the amount of expenditures. If you remember, it was 69 million, and it's a little, slightly more because of rounding, but basically, it's a break-even proposition. Now, again, the city could choose to build more, it's just growth would only pay for a certain component of that. Now, turning to streets, which is the second impact fee we did, there's three components here. One is arterial road capacity, additional bike lanes, and then the consulting costs for the impact fee study. We did use a consumption-based approach here as well, and the costs are allocated to both residential and non-residential development using a unit of measure called vehicle miles of travel, which looks at the trip generation rates by different land uses multiplied by the average trip length on the network. So, here is a snapshot from the 2040 Major Transportation Plan, where we looked at the existing vehicle miles of travel at that point within the urban growth boundary, and the arterial system operates at level of service D, and so we use this to establish the level of service standards within the transportation model we developed. This is a summary of the VMT factors. The fees are allocated to single-family, multifamily for residential, and then four broad categories for non-residential includes industrial flex space, commercial or retail, institutional uses, as well as office spaces. And you can see, these are the average weekday vehicle trip ends, which is, you see the abbreviation VTE. There's a trip adjustment factor, and that's because, for instance, not every trip is a primary trip. So, if you leave the office here on your way home, but you stop at a convenience store to get gas, that wasn't your primary trip. So, there's a trip adjustment factor in there. So, we get those adjusted trip rates and get the average trip length within the network and get our VMT per land use unit shown on the far side of the table there. The cost-per-lane mile assumption is based on Tennessee DOT data, where the average lane mile is slightly over $2 million. The analysis of your current CIP indicates that state and federal sources are covering about 47% of that lane mile cost, and so the net city cost per lane mile is slightly over $1 million. So, that's the assumption used within the impact fee study. Then you can see here in this very busy table that we basically create our own aggregate demand model for the city, and you can see at the top of that, we've got that average trip length of 4.11, and then the vehicle capacity per lane at level severance D. And so, basically, we make a projection of, over the next 10 years, based on your arterial network, that you would have to build an additional 58.7 lane miles, which you can see toward the bottom of the table, and that would have a cost of about $64 million. And when we look at the total VMT generated over the 10-year period, we can get a cost-per-vehicle mile travel of $86 and change. And then this is the draft streets impact fee. You can see here the single-family units, $2,395. The multifamily is $1,857. As you would expect, the commercial retail land use generates the highest fee for the non-residential categories at $3,321 per thousand square feet. That's followed by institutional, office, and finally, industrial flex. And with that, we'll go to the projected street revenue, where total expenditures are projected at 64 million, and we get about 64 million in revenue, and there's a slight surplus, and again, that's due to rounding. Again, just like parks, the city could choose to build 100 million in new arterial capacity, it's just the growth share would only be 64 million. And then this summarizes the total freight, so to speak, an average single-family house if the maximum supportable fee was adopted. There's nothing that says you have to adopt 100% of the amount, but the fee would be $6,276, followed by $4,714 for multifamily units. And then we just talked about transportation. Those fees are the same, because there is no fee for parks and recreation from non-residential development. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Have you, I had a spreadsheet, I'm trying to pull it up, but did you compare surrounding areas to-
Good question. That's usually the next steps when we, once we've had a work session, we usually then start doing usually stakeholder outreach, and that's when those questions come up. But yeah, we can certainly do that fairly easily.
Okay.
Yep.
Couple of big-picture questions, make sure I-
Hey, Rick, can you talk in the microphone? Sorry.
Big-picture questions. One would be, you know, what are the variables that are in the beginning of this, you know, like where you've plugged in, some of the assumptions? Are any of those things, I mean, can they be altered, or are they just, this is what they are, and we've looked at data, and that just, you know, for example, the assumptions as far as how many multifamily versus how many single-family, you know, is that, is that set in stone? I mean, is, did we, who, how, where did that come from?
Right. Good question. So, the, I think I understand your question. So, we worked with city staff in order to estimate what we have here today, and then we also worked with city staff on the best way to make the growth projections. Now, the growth projections aren't driving the fee amount because of the consumption-based approach, which is based on the present. Now, if we were doing a plan-based approach, that projection of future employment, population, housing units would drive the number, okay?
Gotcha.
Right. So, there's nothing, so, yeah, there's not a lot of leeway we have. You know, it is what it is. We can't make up a trip length, you know, we have to go through a method to figure that out. Now, there are ways organically to, because frankly, we work with a lot of communities where, you know, we get our marching order on day one, where, you know, the fee can't be more than X, because we have this politically acceptable number, and so there are ways organically to get that number down by either removing components, like we've had jurisdictions say, well, you know, we're just, the parks fee is only gonna be parks and amenities. We're not gonna focus on open space or community centers. You can also over-credit. There's nothing that says you can't, there's a minimum amount of credit you can give. You can over-credit for other revenues in order to get the fee down.
Yeah, I mean, like, one of the other things that came to my mind was the bike lane.
Right.
I think I saw the footnote that, you know, that was kind of a, city staff kinda helped determine what our cost to add for bike lanes were, and, you know, my, you know, one of the things that we've talked about doing on one of the most recent roads that we're gonna widen is to actually build a, like, a multipurpose path instead of the three-foot-wide bike lane that nobody ever uses.
Right.
To where we actually get it where it's usable, where that might end up costing us a lot more than what our past costs have been. I mean, I, you know, I'm just kinda curious what kind of those, you know, what kind of those assumptions could have been or could be changed or not changed. So, the other question that I had was, do we, I mean, when we're looking at these things, what are the decision points really for us, you know, like, typically, are, so, are there, it sounds like there's a couple of different levels of times we're gonna be getting back together, and I think that's what we all expected from a standpoint of stakeholder, you know, that kind of stuff. But as far as today goes, then, what are our decision points to say, okay, yeah, we're gonna go forward with whatever the next part of the process is? What does that typically look like?
Yeah, well, obviously, that's not my decision, but typically, what we do is, you know, you do a work session like this, we get some feedback, you know, sometimes it's, you know, these fees are too high, or did you look at this, or maybe we should go back and relook.
That happens in today's meetings?
Sometimes.
Because I would have no idea.
Sometimes.
If we don't know what the other people around us are and that sort of thing.
But as you can imagine, you know, the level of detail that certain councils get into is different than others, et cetera. So, sometimes that happens. But generally, it's basically to brief you guys, answer your questions, and then typically, we go to the stakeholders and get feedback from them, and then come back and report to you guys. And then, that's when you would make a decision whether you wanna put this on the agenda at a future meeting.
I don't mind starting, just from, you know, I think a lot of us, when we talked about the impact fee, I think we all have had our own individual stakeholder meetings, and, I mean, I have to disclose that, you know, being in that industry, I deal with lots of different municipalities, so I know when I go to Williamson County, and y'all have heard me say this, you know, I pay $2 a square foot for a privilege tax.
Right.
And then, or when I say, ah, the customer pays that, and then, you know, on top of that, if you build a house greater than 3,400 square feet, it's $16,743 is your school tax fee that goes on top of that, and that's just for the unincorporated county. You know, Smyrna is 20, what was it, $2,700- $2,700 for single-family, $1,800 for multifamily. And they have commercial at $2654 per thousand square feet. And I'll go in a different direction in a minute. So, I mean, I think what I'd like to see, and this is just my opinion, I think we can't argue that it's not time for an impact fee. But I like the approach in municipalities that it's a tiered approach based on the square footage of the house or the facility. So in other words, you know, we have, we have an affordable housing problem in Murfreesboro, there's just not many affordable homes. So, you know, if you build a 2,000-square-foot home, it's a lesser fee than if you build a 5,500-square-foot home. So however, that, that would work. The other thing I would throw out there, you know, I had a meeting this morning with a commercial real estate recruiting firm, and they were talking about, over the last 10 weeks because of COVID, that they are dead. I mean, there is just nothing going on. And so I have apprehension on putting an impact fee on commercial right now when we don't know what that brick-and-mortar phase is going to look like in 12 months. So that, that just scares me that we're, that may be something to discuss, that not having that barrier on someone that will come in, even though that they are providing impact, they are, you know, over 50% of our revenue is sales tax revenue. And then, you know, our job is to create jobs. And so we don't need to have disincentives on creating jobs. That's sort of my approach so far.
So I heard you say you'd like to see the fees based on a square footage basis.
I would.
Okay, we can go back and do the demographics that way.
That's just my opinion. So I, you know, the other council members may have a different opinion. But, I mean, just my opinion, $6,276 for a single-family home is, going from 0 to 6,000 would be extremely tough. You know, in that market, you're going to be, with this fee that you're charging, you're going to be based on what your home will appraise for. I mean, that, so, you know, the developers or any builder, I mean, it's just like if your lumber goes up or something goes up, then the price of your home is going to go up. And you've got to figure out where that happy medium is.
Well, I will tell you, though, if we go to the size-based fee, remember, this is based on averages right now. So if the average single-family, I'm just going to make up a number. Let's say the average single-family house is 300 or 3,000 square feet. That's where that existing 6,200. So anything above that, I mean, the fee could get up to $10,000 easily, you know, for higher, for larger homes. So I just wanted, okay.
But you, your number is higher on that.
Right.
$550 to $650,000 home, you could be able to, you know, you're just not going to be able to do that on. I mean, I would say right now, our average home in Murfreesboro is 300, 325, if you can find one. So, you know, $6,000 on a $300,000 house, that's, that's a pretty big hit.
Is it based on square footage or price?
Right, no, it's based on just the home. Now, if we move to a square footage basis, it'll be by square footage. And one thing to keep in mind, though, that sort of gets lost in translation, and I certainly don't mean to be, or to dismiss the, the impact of the fee on the price of the house. But we've been doing a lot of, like in South Carolina, there's, we're doing a lot of school impact fees there. And because the schools have to fund 100% of the costs, the fees are high, just like in Williamson. And so we've been doing fees there, they're $18,000. And in South Carolina, the act requires you to do an assessment on the impact of affordable housing. And so we look at what the cost burden is relative to, you know, we take the average house, the average income, mortgage, you know, estimate how much you'd pay on, you know, cable, phone, et cetera. And then, then layer the, so do two scenarios, one with the fee and one without. And even with an $18,000 fee, the percentage of income that goes to the mortgage goes up like a tenth of a percent. So you think about it, you're going to wrap up a fee, and this one's only 6,000, and do a mortgage over 30 years. You know, it's $15 a month. So I just want to get things in perspective, because people tend to focus on that, that delta of what the fee is, rather than, well, when you put it in a mortgage, it's not that much money. So.
I had a question. I know it's probably hard to compare, but I was surprised at the impact on parks and rec versus streets. And I know that's based on land and facilities and the amenities that we have. In comparison to the other work that you have done in average-sized cities, is that, I mean, would your takeaway from that be that we're providing a higher level of service of parks than other communities? Therefore, to keep it that way, we have to charge a higher fee in order to do it?
Yes. I mean, nationally, road impact fees are typically higher than parks. That's not always the case, particularly if you've got a high level of service and you include all the components. Because a lot of places we work have a, have another funding source for like open space or, or trails. And so those, a lot of times are sort of jettisoned from the, the impact fee calculation. But, but, I mean, we, we've done, there's plenty of impact fees that we've done that are, that are higher than this for parks. But generally, on average, roads are more.
On the, so from a level of service where we are with parks, you know, to stay at that same level, you know, is it the same with the roads where, I mean, are you saying, if we're at a D level right now, to stay at a D level, that's what we got to be at? I mean, so the other way to look at it maybe is that our road situation is at such a low standard that to stay at that low standard, that's why our number is so low? So the same way that the parks may be high, and to stay at the parks high, you got to be at a high number? Is that, so that's just to keep us at a D, right?
Right, exactly.
Well, and the other challenge with that, and this is, this will curve into something else, is, you know, it was really clear that this can't be used to fix old deficiencies. And so that highlights an even bigger issue that this will make us whole at D moving forward, but it doesn't address what we've done up to this point. And that's going to have a lot of impact on.
Right.
How I look at CIP and road projects moving forward, especially knowing, I agree, this is something we need to do. I didn't know that we couldn't pick winners and losers, you know, because that's what I'd like to do. Talking about that, too. That gets tricky.
Right.
Right? Because there's probably some of us that would know exactly where we'd like to funnel some of this on that chart and take away some of it.
But there are ways, like, if I remember correctly, the sales tax is point-of-sale here, right?
Yes.
And do you use it for roads at all?
The half goes to schools and half comes to, the half goes to county schools, and then half comes to the city.
We've, we do a lot of this out West, because, you know, the cities there, most of them don't have, in Arizona, don't have a property tax. So it's all sales tax. So obviously, they're in a race for retail. And so a lot of times, we'll over-credit the, the transportation fee with sales tax in order to get it down. That's another option.
I think one of the things you put in the report that I really read through light was that this is not the silver bullet, because you can't budget off of a number that you don't necessarily know what it's, I mean, you can use averages. But, I mean, if we used averages based on what we thought the hotel motel tax was going to be this year, then we would be in lots of trouble. You know, I think there are municipalities who've slated the hotel motel tax for certain uses that are quickly finding out that probably wasn't a good idea. With this fee structure, as we move forward, you know, if you collect, say, 500 permits, and just for rough numbers, say, you collected $2,000, $2,000 per house, I mean, are you going ahead on the front end and saying, this is where we're using that regardless? Or do you have to look and say, like what Ronnie was talking about, we can't pick a winner or loser? It has to go into that, that bucket or that area?
Yeah, you have to put it into the, you'd have to establish a park impact fee account, a streets impact fee account, and not co-mingle the monies.
So what if we collect the majority of that, those funds on the west side of town, for example?
Well, we, the way we've, and, I mean, you don't have to expend it there. We're not recommending collection and expenditure zones, because, you know, parks, for instance, you know, we're purposely not including parks that, you know, only serve a neighborhood. And, you know, my kids swim, and wherever they, I mean, they could be swimming anywhere in Montgomery County, Maryland, on a given weekend, right? And, you know, it's just like soccer. I mean, kids play soccer all over the county. I'm assuming you can play soccer all over the city. And they truly are community-level parks is what we're including. And obviously, the transportation network, you have an equal chance of driving anywhere on the arterial network. We really don't need to establish zones here.
Can you just?
Sure.
So we know the difference between single-family and multifamily?
Uh huh.
Where is the delineation there as far as, you know, how many, is there a doors per building? Or how do we?
Yeah, it's, it's right here. So you can see here that, you know, a single-family has, you know, 2.69 versus almost two persons for multifamily.
The assumptions that we made earlier as far as the growth assumptions, and I know maybe that, again, may not matter as much as what I think. But, you know, is there a, the last two or three years, we've had many more people move here into multifamily.
Right.
Units than we have in single-family. I mean, the number of single-family permits is less than multifamily permits.
Right.
And we've got this thing three times more single-family. I just want to make sure that.
That doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't influence the results. And if you adopted the impact fees, a community that grows as fast as you guys should revisit at least every five years. And then again, we'd probably find that your, you know, the mix of single or multifamily has grown as a percentage that would be reflected in that update, as well as the updated costs and projections.
This is probably, we've talked about this. Do you see municipalities who have a transfer fee? Or, the part that I don't like about this, just from a fairness standpoint, I mean, I know on record that I think it's something we need to do. But, you know, for a great example, Craig moved here from Arizona. And Craig did not buy a new construction home. Craig bought an existing home. But Craig brings a burden into our existing structure that, or our existing system that, because he's a new family.
Right.
Now, the assumption is that, well, maybe the person who was living in Craig's house bought a single-family house, but maybe that person bought an existing, existing home. So how, how is there the opportunity that everybody, everyone pays the fair share, and you're not just picking on one group?
Right. Well, I mean, that's a common criticism. And, and, you know, no matter what funding source you have, it's never going to be perfectly fair, right? If you fund roads with property tax, it's not fair, because there's no correlation between the amount of money you're generating from tax versus what you consume in infrastructure. So, you know, that's the failing with that. You know, the criticism with impact fees is just that, is that you've, yeah, you could come in here, and we see this a lot with schools, where you have recycling of housing units, and the student growth is sort of equal. Half of it's new growth, and half of it's the fact that people are moving into homes as empty nesters retire or leave, and they're generating schoolchildren as well. But, and you, and you, I think you put the other side of the argument on the table, which is, yeah, the person who vacated the house Craig went to has now bought a new single-family house. And so there is, the transaction has created a net new service unit that you have to, have to pay for, right? And then the argument becomes, well, this person's been paying taxes for 20 years in town, but, you know, they'd made that decision, and they've now created this net new service unit. Yeah. But you're never going to get a perfect funding source.
I didn't know if you maybe had that perfect funding source, and you just sat and.
Make somebody ask for it, instead of just showing it to us.
Perfect funding source would be sales tax, and then you would exempt everybody who already lives here. So only the visitors pay the sales tax.
Try that.
There you go.
Council, do y'all have a direction that you would like to? Each of you want to give direction on where, where to go from here? What you would like to see?
I think we need to look at surrounding communities and see what they're doing. I really thought that we were going to get numbers based on square footage. Single-family, 6,200 per house is, that's quite a bit. And I think if we look around and just see what everybody else is doing before we even really get into any hard numbers, it may give us a bigger picture of where we might be.
And one of, one of the reasons that I was asking the difference between the single-family and the multifamily was really just trying to figure out, okay, well, which number applies to townhomes, for example?
Townhome, single-family. Yeah, it's single-family attached versus detached.
Even if there's eight units in one building?
It's each unit has its own.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you see where I'm?
Yep.
Yeah.
So you're really, you're designating that by fee simple, I mean, if it's a.
Right. And it used to be, in the old days, up until 2010, the census made a distinction between single-family attached and detached. And we were able to calculate fees that way. We still do it, but you've got to get the PUMS data, which is a sample, and it's not as accurate. So they are included in the single-family as one category.
I'll just put my, I mean, as far as what Shane said, and I think that's what Kurt's kind of saying the same thing, is that, I mean, I, I don't know a whole lot about this. This is brand-new to me, I mean, frankly. So I'm just trying to think big picture here mostly today. But it sounds to me like, or it seems to me like the, some sort of a graduated number probably makes a little more sense to me, you know, than stacking 6,000 on top of a $240,000 new house versus 6,000 on top of a $750,000 new house. Doesn't, that doesn't seem to be logical to me that there would be some graduated scale. So for what it's worth, I think that's what, if that's what Shane's saying, I probably, it seems like it makes sense to me, too. So maybe looking at it that way.
I'd actually like to compare the two, because in Murfreesboro, a vast majority of the houses we build are in the 3,500 and less range. So if we're going to really stick by square footage and really go after an impact fee with people at 5,000 foot, 7,000 foot, stuff like that, we don't have a lot of those houses being built. So if we graduate it too much, then you're kind of cutting your nose despite your face.
Yeah, Williamson County, I think, does 1,300 and under, 14 to 1599, 1,900 to 2399, 2,400. They don't do necessarily a per-square-footage. They just say, look, here's the fee from.
Right.
1,300 and under, and then here's a, it's 14 to 2111, 1,900 to 2399, 2,400 to 2599. And then, once you get to 3,400, it's, here's what the fee is, no matter if you're building 3,400 and up. So it's a.
It depends on the data and what the linear regression analysis, the R2 factor, that's how we end up figuring out the delineation points. But what we could do is, is we could come back and, you know, redo the demographics by square footage, so you could see the comparison, and also have the comparison of the, of the communities, so you could see that, if it makes you more comfortable.
Yeah, and we've done this before. I mean, although it's not the same thing, we did this on stormwater management. You know, I think it's three and a quarter per single, single, single-family unit. But when you go to the commercial side, they figure how much impervious area you have. And, and so you may pay more depending upon the level of pavement that you have.
I think we kind of need to continue down this road. We're in an information gathering phase of this. And I think you said something about stakeholder meetings or those kind of things that need to progress. So I, you know, I would feel comfortable just taking what you've given us, continue to gather some of that information related to surrounding areas, related to surrounding areas, reaction to this in the development community, some of those kinds of things. And then have another report forward because I, you know, there's a little sticker shock, I think, to some, some folks when you look at, at the figures as they come back. But we're just on the first stages of this, getting information for us. So my, my opinion is just keep eye on the field and see, make, look for a decision later on.
Ronnie? You know, there's some stuff I've learned today that I didn't know. So, I mean, that's very helpful. I think, you know, you mentioned there's not a perfect system. I think for me, and I'm just kind of thinking through this, in an ideal, perfect situation, we'd have some idea of what the impact, much like we've talked about in sewer, you know, where is this house or this commercial piece or this, you know, industrial piece? You know, the other thing we haven't talked about, and, you know, I'm sensitive to the residential as well because that's such a driver in our community. But, you know, the fee per thousand square feet on commercial and industrial and things like that, you know, you add 100,000 square feet or 50,000 square feet, you know, are those big numbers? Well, you know, they seem big. Are they going to deter anyone from coming here that wants to come here? I don't know that, you know. On the residential side, I think clearly the biggest risk is having too large of a fee on the lower income housing or the lower price point housing. That's a challenge. On a $500,000 house, six grand is nothing, really. You know, I mean, it's just not. So, you know, I think in a perfect system, we have some idea and it may be impossible to do. But this is somewhat integrated with some of the sewer challenges that we're having related to capacity and recovery. And all that stuff is somewhat integrated so that we're recovering cost in certain areas based on the growth and based on capacity and, and based on parks and based on streets. And, you know, you think of Case and Lane, is it enough for a, I forget what the number is, but $2,000, $3,800 single family fee for Case and Lane, you know, doesn't seem like enough for me. But somewhere else, it may be more than enough for that particular area. But how do you figure that out and where do you draw the lines? I know all that's complicated, so I'm still working through it.
Could that be adjusted with credits? Like you were saying, if we had one area, we wanted impacted more, could we adjust it with credits?
If I understood you correctly, you're asking, can you divide the city into zones and give credits in one area but not in the other?
That's the thing we all need to be aware of, that, you know, when we put this in, it, it, there's really, from listening, there's not really a one size, one size fits all. I mean, so, you know, in other words, like I know we've got Lee Street over here, that there's a development that the developer's looking, which I would think, you know, that's a good thing to see that area redevelop. But they're going to pay the same fee in areas that, you know, we really want areas to redevelop. So that, I mean, that's a.
What was your, what was your conversation about affordable housing and how you compensate? You had, how you make up that difference?
Yeah, well, you can do the same thing with, with redevelopment, for instance. So if, if, if you're trying to incentivize a particular industry or incentivize development, like, you know, downtown, you can waive the fee, but you have to make up the difference. Right? And it's usually that waiver is in support of some sort of stated policy, like here's our affordable housing policy or, you know, here's our policy for downtown. So that you're, you've got something to hang your hat on versus playing favorites, right?
Let me just, could you take the revenues that are generated through this and put them in a pot that would address that, where you could relieve the fee in areas like our downtown or somewhere where we wanted to spur growth? But it would come out at those, those fees?
It wouldn't come out of the impact fees. You would have to make a general fund transfer.
Okay.
Or another tax-supported fund transfer in order to, to, you know, you could say, hey, we're waiving this fee because, you know, we need this project to be an economic catalyst for downtown development. Right? And, and, and there's several ways, not to get too in the weeds, but, you know, your ordinance that you would use to implement the fees has to have a provision for appeals, right? Because we're using sort of standard, you know, like for trip rates, we're using ITE, national trip standards because most communities don't have their own custom trip rates. They haven't gone out and done those surveys. But you can't, you have to have an appeals process. So a, a developer can come in or an applicant can come in and say, you know, our fee should be less because, you know, for instance, with transportation, because of the mix of uses, the density, the access to, you know, alternative modes of transportation, that, you know, the trip generation rate is wrong for us because we're going to have a higher internal trip capture. And that's a legitimate argument, right? And so the fee is reduced, but they have to prove it, right? They'll have an engineer do a study that shows, you know, justifies why they, the fee should be reduced and they don't behave like this. Right? Which is very different than someone just coming in and saying, well, this single family subdivision is going to be marketed towards seniors. So we should pay, there's going to be less people. Well, marketed is different than deed restricted, right? So if you had a school impact fee, for instance, you know, deed restricted housing is exempt from school impact fees. Impact or subdivisions that are marketed towards seniors, they still pay a school impact fee. Right? But you have to have that appeals process. So it's, it's a multi-layer. One is you can prove that they shouldn't have paid the fees that they, you know, the fee shouldn't have been 700,000. Should have been 600,000 or 500,000 because of the internal trip capture. And we're going to waive it and make up the difference because we want this to happen in support of a policy.
The thing that I can, I mean, I think goes along a little bit with what he was saying as far as, and, and sort of what Ronnie was saying in a, in a way that, you know, your, your trip capture data is going to be absolutely different from somebody who builds, you know, a development that's closer to the center of the town versus somebody that's all the way on the outskirts, you know. By definition, their, their trips are going to be longer to, you know, coming through town. I mean, you got the chance to go, you know, 16 miles or whatever from one side to the next. It'll be the county, you know, the county.
Right.
You know, rather than, if you're in the middle, it's half that. And so, I mean, if we, if we're going to use average, if we're using an average trip count, would there be an argument to appeal, well, we're not going to have the same mileage?
But they, but they would have to, they would have to have an engineered study that shows that.
I mean, it seems to me like they can get engineers to say whatever they want to.
That doesn't, but that.
That always works.
But that doesn't mean you have to, but that doesn't mean you have to approve it. Right?
Well, I mean, it happens all the time, man. The traffic's, there's never any kids going to the school. There's never any additional traffic. There's, you know, it's always the case, man.
Is there another entity, who do they appear, appeal to?
Usually the ordinance sets up a, a committee. Sometimes they use, you know, it's all your preference. I mean, some, some communities use the planning commission. Some have an independent body made up of different people.
I think we should, no matter whether he's on council or not in the future, I think we should put Rick LaLance like literally in the ordinance, Rick LaLance. All right, so council, are y'all good with, with maybe, let's come up, get, how many, I mean, what's a good timeline that you need before we can have another workshop on this?
Well, I guess the question in my mind is, are we, because I heard two things. One is you want us to redo the demographics and, and do the fee comparison. But I also heard, let's continue with the process and get some feedback from the stakeholders, which is typically what happens. Then we would come back and report to you, you know, maybe six weeks, two months, whatever it is, and say, look, this is, this is what we did in terms of the demographics, here's where the fees lie, here's what we've heard from stakeholders and.
Since we already have, since we have the, we have, I think I heard this right, we have the capability to not adopt the entire thing. Right? So, I mean, if we get to the, towards the end of this thing and we say, well, you know, if we think 6,000 is too high for just this example, then, you know, we can always say it's four or whatever. I mean, we can do that at the end. So, I mean, as far as, we wouldn't adjust any numbers right yet, other than just look at it on a square foot basis.
So you're, you're saying that typically the process follows, you would meet with the stakeholders in conjunction with doing the demographic study and then you would bring all that back to us?
That's normally how it does.
I mean, that's fair to go, to go that route?
Yeah.
I think from a timeline, given current circumstances and we're heading for the holidays, it's probably after the first of the year is really what we're looking at.
Yeah.
Could we, would it be acceptable just to say our January workshop meeting, that this will come back? And that'll be?
And they'll do stakeholder meetings in between then?
Try to, we'll have to take a look and see, you know, how we can gather people up.
I imagine now you can zoom all those meetings.
We have been doing some zooms, yeah, and some in person, just depends.
Yeah, how much feedback we can get.
Yeah.
Probably be pretty good.
Is everybody, everybody okay with that?
Yep.
All right, thank you very much.
My pleasure, thank you.
Well, now move to development agreements with Costco Wholesale Corporation and associated real estate agreements. Craig?
Great. I think I've, I've long heard and I'm sure you have a long desire of a community to have a Costco located in, in Murfreesboro. And so for the last several months, we've had discussions with, with several entities, including Costco and the IDB, Industrial Development Board with landowner, to develop a development agreement, some associated agreements with that, to have a Costco located on Warrior Drive, just north of New Salem, close to I-24. You'll, if you've driven by there, you'll notice that it's under development right now, that, that area. We worked with the IDB to develop a pilot program. And it's a graduated payments, property taxes in lieu over the next five years. And that requires, for the pilot program, requires non-taxable ownership. So the city has agreed to purchase the land at, at a reduced rate and then transfer that to the IDB. And then the pilot payment in lieu's taxes can go in effect. The city's also agreed, do you have your map, Sam? Sam will pull up a map here. City's also agreed to do some roadway development. The landowner has commitments in the development agreement, you'll notice, to do some road development. And the city's agreed to do some intersection improvements on New Salem and Warrior Drive to work with TDOT on the off-ramp onto New Salem off I-24. And then to develop a bridge over the West Fork. All of those are really consistent with our transport, major transportation plan. So, you know, we're just advancing some of that, those projects. The bridge itself is part of a longer-term plan to overpass I-24. And so some of this is, is, really helps our tran, our traffic issues in that area to allow some alternative rates off of River Rock and, and that area. So with that, if you have any questions, happy to answer that and walk through the deal. This is a request for action to approve those. And you'll see a, as next, as a companion to this, a budget supplement that will have the, the land purchase, transfer the funds for the land purchase so that we can get that done on first reading and then we'll bring it back on the 19th to finalize that and then move towards closing. The timeline, Costco builds extremely quickly, we learned in discussions with them. So, once we close, I think they, the plan is for them to go forward as quickly as possible and they will have their building up extremely quickly. And we'll work with them to make sure that happens. Overall, for the direct incentives that we talked about as far as the land purchase and that, excluding the, the traffic issues, the, the payback on our economic development investments, probably around between two and three years on a very conservative estimate. Any questions?
Any questions, council member? Council members? All right, so we'll now need to consider ordinance 20042 for fiscal, excuse me, we'll need to approve the budget, excuse me, the development agreement and then into the budget amendment.
Development agreement and those associated documents that go with it?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye, we'll now need to consider ordinance 20042. This is a budget amendment, ordinance administration.
Move for approval?
Motion is second, Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll now need to discuss the community investment program. This is the fiscal, for the fiscal 2022 budget.
Thank you, mayor. Okay, so last month, council approved the 21 CIP that required no new debt. Today, we'll discuss the 22 plan. And this plan does require new funding from additional debt. If approved today, we'll work with Cumberland Securities on the timing for entering the bond market with the hopes that we can lock in a low fixed interest rate before rates start trending back up. So the 22 CIP is proposed at 70 million. Roads top the uses at close to 70% while recreation makes up 14%. Public safety is at eight and airport and solid waste are both at three. You'll see that schools are not included on this breakdown. The new school's finance director is working to update their plan to better align with the school's current and future priorities. In addition, we received our shared county shared bond proceeds a couple of weeks ago and these funds are expected to be used for the school CIP for the next couple of years and will be budgeted as part of the annual operating budget process. So, starting with our largest category with roads, we'll take a look at just the major projects listed for 22. Brinkley Road is a 13.6 million dollar project. It includes widening from a two-lane to a three-lane road with curb gutter and sidewalks. 3 million is budgeted in 22, which will primarily center around replacing the bridge and building a pedestrian walkway under the bridge. And then the rest of the project will be funded out of future CIPs. Since we last met, a couple of additional road projects have been added to this list, including widening Broad Street from Medical Center to 840, from four lanes to seven. 80% of the expected 46 million in costs is expected to be federally funded. And then once completed, this will provide increased capacity and improve traffic congestion. Also on Broad is the construction of an additional left turn lane from Broad onto Medical Center. We just have 300,000 included this year and then 3.7 million in next year's CIP. Again, this will help with improved traffic flow and congestion. Butler Drive is a 15 million dollar project with 8.5 million coming from city funding and the remaining 6.5 million from the county. 4.5 million scheduled in this plan with the remaining coming out of the 23 CIP. And this project includes both improvements and extension of Butler Drive, including relocating the intersection with Joby Jackson. The Cherry Lane Sazerac extension is part of the road improvements related to the agreement with both Sazerac and the surrounding landowners. This project will be reviewed for scope and timing based on when the Sazerac development occurs. Cherry Lane Phase Two is estimated at around 17 million, includes widening Cherry Lane to a five-lane road with curb gutter and sidewalks. We have previous funding of 1 million that will fund the design and environmental clearances. And then this CIP includes 7 million with the remaining funding coming in 23 and 24. Cherry Lane Phase Three is a 54 million dollar project that also includes widening Cherry Lane and constructing the interchange at 840. We have previous funding of 3.2 million to fund the design and environmental clearances and start the right-of-way process. We have secured 7 million in federal funding and expect to secure more funding as well. This plan has 6 million dollars scheduled to be borrowed in 22 with additional funding in future CIPs. Downtown roads are also a focus in this plan. The Front and Vine Street realignment project is budgeted at 2.5 million. And this will realign and signalize Front Street at the Broad Street intersection. This is intended to approve safety and accessibility with Broad Street and also Cannonsburg. The Gateway Extension of Robert Rose is a 2.4 million dollar project that will provide direct access from Medical Center to Robert Rose and improve traffic flow and congestion there as well. Lidle Street Phase Three is budgeted at 3.5 million and will reconstruct the area around One East College. Memorial Boulevard widening is a 27 million dollar project with around 80% in state funding. This plan includes 1 million in city funding to begin the design phase. And this will widen Memorial from Thompson Lane down to Jefferson Pike to Five Lane with curb gutter and sidewalks. Adding an extended right turn lane from Old Fort Parkway onto Thompson Lane is also planned here at a cost of 1.3 million. This is expected to ease congestion and help prevent collisions where traffic backs up on Old Fort. Also, we have widening Old Fort between I-24 and New Salem from four to six lanes. And this is an anticipated 18, 18 million dollar project with 80% federal funding. The River Rock Beazee Road Bridge is an economic development opportunity as part of this Costco agreement that will construct a bridge over Stones River near Old Racket Club Drive and includes those intersection improvements at Warrior and New Salem. The total cost here is 8.5 million with 2.5 already funded from the 21 CIP and the remainder funded here. So that's just a high-level review of the road projects. Are there any questions before I move on? So moving into Parks and Rec, we have 3.7 million for the Segal renovations included here. A little over 10 million has been secured through previous funding and this should complete the project. FY '22 has several other Parks and Rec projects, including funding for the Barfield Crescent Park expansion. Currently, Recreation has about five acres next to McKnight Park. And this property would really be better served as airport property rather than used for parks. But since this land was purchased with federal funding, the city must apply for a 6F conversion. Part of this 6F conversion process includes replacing the park land with another property of equal or greater size and value. So staff has identified a possible replacement property adjacent to Barfield as part of this conversion. conversion, and that, that plan will be presented to y'all in the future council meeting. Other funding of 3.3 million is for Parks and Rec facilities just broadly across the city, and those include improvements at Cannonsburg, Patterson, Bradley Academy, and Barfield. It also includes parking improvements at Old Fort and McKnight Parks. A few other major projects include completing the funding for the transit facility around a million and a half, and Airport has 2.1 million budgeted for taxiway F and T-hanger construction and pavement maintenance of the runway. Public Safety has 5.5 million in budgeted projects in the '22 CIP, and this includes vehicles and technology and police, and apparatus and equipment replacements and fire. And finally, in public works, funding of 4 million is requested for solid waste and street equipment replacements, and also a new salt barn to be co-located with the new solid waste transfer station. Having that salt barn on both sides of town will provide better coverage and accessibility to the city during winter events. So here's a look at the Cumberland Securities snapshot of how this additional debt could impact our debt service. You can see here on the blue column that 2.25% was used as the estimated interest rate for the '22 CIP, with incremental increases to rates each year for future CIPs. If rates stay low, these projections could go down depending on the structure of the debt, and this structure does include equal principal amortization. So you can see in the green column where our existing debt service sits. FY '22, or FY '21's budget includes 38.8 million in debt service, and then considering old debt that will drop off, and then the new debt for the FY '22, next year's overall debt service looks to be impacted by around 130,000. Again, this will adjust based on actual interest rates and how that debt is structured. So again, this is just a high-level review of the '22 CIP projects. The '23, '24, and '25 projects really just are there for placeholders. As we, you know, get closer with those projects, better estimates and timing will be updated on the plan. We ultimately recommend council approve the '22 plan today, so that this will allow us to keep an eye on the market and then, and on the interest rates for the end of this year and into next year. And if the markets dictate borrowing before FY '22 begins, we still would not have debt service impacts until after July 1. So are there any questions?
I've got some road-related questions.
Okay.
And you may want to answer, others may want to answer.
Just bring Chris on up here.
I'm curious, so, there's been some conversation we've had of late. Obviously, I'm, I'm supportive of, of us spending more on roads, we talked about that. You know, I think the thing that I would say is, let's max out our capacity to do what we can do. I think that's important. Because of that, it's given me more time to think about how we're picking, what we're choosing to do, and I can't help but to, you know, we made a decision as a council to pass on what I would say is sort of a, a major development project at the avenue as a result of a transportation issue, traffic issue on Wilkinson Pike. Of course, that's not here from a priority standpoint, and we're prioritizing other things, the PC Rose Road Bridge as sort of an economic development piece. We've got Cherry Lane there that we're talking about as opportunities for improvement. Talk a little bit about why some of these older legacy projects are not prioritized. I think of Rucker Lane, for example, which, it's not as, from a priority standpoint, it's not prioritized for next year. So, talk about how we've picked that, why we've picked those things, and some of those in my mind that I mentioned, why they're absent.
Sure, sure. The projects you, you see here that were prioritized, we feel like are more what I would call volume eaters, they can, they're actually picking up the, the volume or increasing our ability to, capacity-wise, like the Rucker Lane project, the Wilkinson Pike project, both very good projects, but I would say both of those are more operational issues. Wilkinson Pike, we actually are scheduled to, to repave sections of that this spring just because of the condition of it and making that a more attractive use. But if you look at, really, as far as increasing capacity in that, it's not really going to do that much. It, it just calls to be a three-lane. Now, if we were going up to a four or five-lane on Wilkinson Pike, obviously that would be increased to capacity. So we're really trying to focus on, on capacity or possibly providing additional routes as the Gateway Boulevard project connecting from, from Medical Center over to Robert Rose will do. So, so either additional routes or, or an increase to the, to the actual through lanes that, that motors are using.
And also, Rucker Lane, we do have funding for one phase of that already.
Yes, yes, we've, we have previous funding for Rucker Lane, so we'll go from around Merrmont, Merrwood, and a little bit towards, a little bit closer to Veterans Parkway, and we'll actually make that connection to Veterans Parkway. So we're, it's still on the list, it's, it's just been bumped out a year or two to allow us to construct that first phase, and then we'll come up with this next phase right behind it to construct. But even that, now that, and Rucker Lane, I would say is, is an operational issue and is also a, a safety issue, just with the, the drop-offs of the shoulders there, we certainly want to improve that.
And I'll say too, there, you know, there's a good potential with going to the bond market and getting a healthy premium with, with the bond issuance, and so, should that occur, you know, we can bring that back, we'd bring that back to council to see how y'all want to spend that premium as well. And you could certainly allocate that to additional road projects if you chose.
One other thing, we also have prioritized intersections where we have some pinch points where we feel like we can do better. You know, that, that's where you're always going to see things backing up, so we've added about three or four intersections after our last meeting to, and those are typically a little less costly, and so we can, we can get those moving through those, you know, the, the pinch points.
Just one clarification too on Beezy Road. What we're doing is just the bridge over the river, that what we're doing this year doesn't include getting the bridge over 24 and on to Church Street, correct?
That's correct, yes, that's correct.
What's your, I mean, to me, that's one of those, like, I can look at that one and say, "I feel real good about taking a, a bigger chunk of that from a city's perspective." You know, that's all within the city, and is absolutely one of those that I think helps the current population who lives here get from one side of town to the other. When do you foresee the, the stretch that would go over the interstate and over to Church Street?
There's a couple of other, other projects that need to move forward before we think that would really be a viable option. You know, we've designated the property we're going through there, for instance, is the city school, the bus maintenance facility, so we're going to have to find a relocation for that. It's going to take a relocation, Malloy. Now, what we have placed in here and we're putting a priority on is the Rutherford Boulevard extension over to, to Warrior Drive. So very similar, just not, you know, probably two or three miles from this location, right before you get to, to Riverdale High School, going across there between Warrior over to, over 24. Already had discussions with TDOT about that, they feel like that that's a, a, a project that we can do, would just be just a, just an engineering technical review, so it's not really have to do anything as far as a justification study or anything along those lines. So we're really wanting to, we feel like that's a lot more doable project and, and a project that has developed a land on both sides of it, that we could probably work with the developers to donate that right-of-way and, and move those, move that project a little bit quick, more quickly than we could the, the Beezy Road.
Does that come in right there at that curve, the big curve, basically?
It's actually, it's actually between the big curve and, and Riverdale. It's actually, the, the new apartments there, it lines up with the, with the entrance to, the, the furthest entrance there to those new apartments. If you remember that, you're exactly right, Mr. LaLance, you know, the 2040 major thorough plan showed one of our greatest impediments was, was I-24 and getting new connections across that, and so, that was our thinking on the, the Rutherford Boulevard extension.
Any other questions? Again, this is really, we're authorizing, proceed with, with these projects, but we're not authorizing borrowing yet.
No, we would, we would come back with resolutions for all of that in the, in the coming weeks.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we approve it, yeah. All right, we have a motion. Kurt seconds. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Obey.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Obey.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor, Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll now move into any questions on the financial dashboard information that Ms. Tucker provided you. All right, seeing none, we'll move into licensing. You have one beer permit.
Yes, mayor, this is an ownership change for a restaurant at 352 West Northfield Boulevard, Suite 1A. The background application is in order, they do need to finish their building codes inspections, so we wouldn't issue that permit until that has been done, if you approve it today.
And the good thing is, this applicant does not have to go to traffic school.
This is true.
Make sure we approve it. Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any statements to be paid?
No, sir.
We have an introduction?
I want to introduce Michael Smith. Michael, stand up, is our new...
Finance director.
Finance director at City Schools, Gary Anderson, he's been here how long?
Month, I've been here a month.
A month, so far we've hung on to him. A month, and so we're excited to have him, and he's brought a lot of good thinking already so far.
Any other business? I want to make one comment, there's a lot of, the Daily News Journal, I know will be covering this, Cecil Joyce and a lot of the team there does a great job, but there are young men and women all over our city and county who are signing scholarship deals today to play for different universities all over our country, whether it's basketball or softball or lots of different sports. So we want to congratulate them and their parents for their achievements in representing Murfreesboro and Rutherford County well as they move to the next stage of their career, so, something, lots of exciting things. All right, seeing no other business, we'll stand adjourned.